Good evening and welcome. Violin Board of Education Agenda for the Special Meeting at 5:00 PM on July 12, 2023. Roll call, please.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Mr. Rivera?
Here.
Mr. Sabrana?
Present.
Mr. Silva?
Here.
Mrs. Cottis Spotty?
Here.
Ms. Spinelli?
Here. In compliance to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law, commonly referred to as the Sunshine Law, the Violin Board of Education has caused notice and posting of this meeting to be sent announcing time, place, agenda, et cetera. The Daily Journal, S&amp;J Today, The Press of Atlantic City, Noesta Camunida, The Clerk for the City of Vineland, and the Administrative Public Bulletin Board. At this time, will you please stand for the flag salute?
At this time, we will move on to public comment on agenda items. Please limit yourself to three minutes in any matter. No public comment at this time.
I'm sorry, Luiz Vasquez Vineland, I did leave the form up there, maybe she didn't get it to you.
Meeting, is it something for the regular meeting or the special meeting?
It said any matter, right? Public comments on any matter? So I can speak on any matter, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so because I also have some time constraints, I'll keep it to a few minutes based on school security. We are aware that we lost another 14-year-old in Cumberland County. We understand that there's an uptick in violence among our teenagers. And I am concerned as a parent whose daughter just graduated Violin High School. I feel a little more free about talking about what things are really like in there. This is something that I think that we need to stay ahead of instead of being reactive to something should something occur in a violent schools, we need to be proactive. And I think that as a district, we need to be looking for companies, vendors, some type of organization, or the possibility of entertaining one that is more equipped in school security with a higher level of training that would be ahead of somebody with a potential threat in the school. Somebody that knows what to do when you have multiple people with guns in the school that would be able to detect it. We know that not every student's bag was being checked. It's impossible. When we tried it the first couple of days, the kids were wrapped around the building and they missed their first or second period of school. So although very well-meaning and I appreciate this district for attempting that, that's the reality of is that the bags were just getting through for the sake of the kids getting to class. It just takes one student bringing a weapon to the school and hurting one. And then here we are in the situation figuring out how did this happen? So I'm as a parent, I'm standing here urging you all to get beyond, and I'm not saying anything negative about our security force, but I'm talking about another level of security that is highly trained, that specialized training specifically for these things. Unfortunately, we're living in these times where we do have to entertain these conversations. They're very difficult. Yes, they do cost, but I think the lives of our children are worth entertaining the expense of another level of security and making sure that parents can go to work and to their workplaces feeling confident that nothing's going to happen to their kids. Should another kid bring a gun into the school? The reality is, these kids have weapons. What we're learning in the street is that they're being hidden. Elementary schools are holding these guns in their rooms and places and properties. I'm doing my best to bring an awareness to parents to check their kids' rooms and their properties because they're using the young kids to hold the weapons for the older kids. They have guns, people, and it's it's kids that you would never think that have them. Please do not wait for something to occur in the Violin School District before we before we act. And I say, take it seriously. If somebody's reaching out to you, offering a service, at least give them the benefit of a meeting to see what type of service they can offer that will put us in a better position to protect our kids. So thank you so much and have a great evening.
Dolly Marciano?
I'm a retired, very proud retired teacher in Vineland. I taught for 11 years in Veterans Memorial School. Before that, I worked 32 years at Prudential Insurance in Personnel and Supervision. I remember when I worked at Prudential, if someone asked, and there was an opening, if someone asked to be transferred because they absolutely thought they would be a good fit, they liked the position, they wanted to do it, they wanted to, or even previously there and wanted to go back, we always tried to accommodate that for the simple reason, if you give a person a job they want to do, job they like to do, they'll probably be very good at it and very committed to it. So I know that doesn't always work that way in the public school system. However, if I had asked to go teach math, you would ask me to go teach math, I would probably have had to resign because I wouldn't know what the heck I was doing. If I'm good at something, and I taught Language Arts, I'm certified K through 12 in New Jersey, and you asked me to leave Language Arts, I would have a serious meltdown because I'm good at what I did. Why would you want to take somebody who's really good at what they do and move them to someplace they may not want to do, they may not be happy with, they may not enjoy it? Do you think their commitment level is going to be as high as it would be if you gave them the opportunity to go where they wanted to go, be where they wanted to be, or in maybe stay where they are currently at? So from a business perspective, and public schools are a business, let's face reality, if you look at it from a business perspective, why would you torture somebody who doesn't really want to go somewhere? There must be somebody else who wants to transfer, wants to be in another position. Check around before you say you have to go here, you can't stay where you're at. It serves no purpose for the school, for the district, for the board, for the teachers, for the students, and for the parents. For instance, if I were a middle school teacher, and I was certified to teach middle school, and I had a child in the district, number one, I would be in a position where I could relate to the curriculum more so. My child would be in the middle school. It would help me to be in that school simply because I would be on the same school hours as my child. That sounds like a win-win. So I just had heard things, and I wanted to come up and speak as a retired teacher and as a current substitute, which I've been doing for 11 years now and enjoy. I will go to elementary school sometimes, not real good there. I love the middle school and the high school. I've been in the middle school. I know the students, I know the curriculum, and I know how they operate the schools and I know the principals. So it works out for the school, it works out for me. I'm a preferred substitute. Many of my former teacher colleagues request me, and I'm always happy to accommodate if I can. So thank you for your time and just make decisions that will benefit everybody without forcing people to do this, to go there, to be where they really don't enjoy being. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Ms. Spinelli has asked me to briefly summarize the procedure for tonight's special meeting. As a result of a board vacancy, bylaw 0143 is triggered. Under this bylaw, the board secretary has advertised newspaper and otherwise, including website and social media, the board vacancy and sought candidates to submit applications. The board has received two applications to fill the vacancy. The bylaw provides that each candidate will complete a five-question questionnaire of common questions. They were called and they came in at 4:30 to privately answer the questions in the board conference room. The candidates will be called one at a time in alphabetical order and make a seven-minute presentation. That presentation could be a paraphrasing of their answers, or they could simply recite the question and recite the answer. There would be no questions from board members to the candidates. At the end of their presentation, the board president will ask one final common question, and each of the applicants will answer that question right there on the spot without any preparation. After the two presentations, the board will retire into executive sessions to deliberate and make their decision. And that decision will be announced publicly by a public vote when we return from executive session.
Thank you. So at this time, I would like to welcome Mrs. Makima Douglas, our first candidate, to the podium. You have seven minutes to present, and then I will ask you your final question.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. The first question is, what is or are your reasons for seeking this position on the Violin Board of Education? I am seeking this position on the Violin Board of Education first because I love this great city and its beautiful people. I believe I have the skills in leadership, creativity, and forward-thinking needed to support administration and advancing school performance, community rapport, and its ability to handle pressing issues. The second question, what do you perceive to be the top two affecting, the top two issues affecting the Violin Public School System, and how would you consider developing policies to deal with these two issues? Funding is always at the top of the list of issues affecting the Violin Public School System or any school system. So I would focus on supporting policies that are in place to ensure that funding is being spent according to the resources it has been assigned or allocated to. The second pressing issue, of course, is hiring and retaining teachers. It's a big issue, and we know we have one here. So I would support administration in policies, developing policies for mentorship and recruiting teachers in core subjects such as science, math, technology, engineering, and language arts. Third question, do you currently have any conflicts with the Violin Public School District? No, of course not. I do not have any current conflicts with the Violin Public School District. It is my desire to serve and support its mission, administration, staff, students, family, and other stakeholders in its success. Fourth question, what is your experience with the Violin Public School District? Did you attend or have your children attended now or in the past? I can say with pride, I attended Violin Public Schools from K through 12th grade. My three sons attended Violin Public Schools and graduated from Violin Public High School. I taught Violin preschool as an assistant, as a teacher, at All Kids First for a total of 15 years. I have returned to Violin Public Schools for Read Across America as a guest reader. I have also conducted workshops and been guest speaker at Violin's alternative schools such as Cunningham Academy, Pine Land Learning Center. I've conducted workshops and I volunteered. I've taught workshops on bias, discrimination, and hate crimes, which are all relevant issues. And I volunteer whenever asked or am available. And the final and fifth question is, as a board member, do you see yourself as a representative of the taxpayers, the school district, or both? Please elaborate. As a board member, my first obligation would be to represent the taxpayers of this great city. And doing that, and doing that, I will support and uphold in every way possible policies that provide the best outcomes for everyone in the school district. I understand the assignment is a challenge, and it can be difficult at times, but it can be done. There's nothing new under the sun, meaning Mandela said it like this, it always seems impossible until it's done.
Those are the five questions.
So for your final question, and this is a two-part question, describe what you believe the responsibilities of a board member are, and what you believe the responsibilities of the superintendent are.
As a board member, I believe the responsibility is to uphold the policies that are set in place by our governor, by our state, by our nation, by our district. As a member, it is my responsibility to care about what the superintendent thinks and work with the members on the board, and to be a voice for the taxpayers at all times, and to be an ear for every person that is a component in the success of this school district. And the second part, the superintendent has a huge responsibility, although the superintendent has lots of support here in Violin, we are a large district. The superintendent has to bear the brunt of a lot of the gossip and the drama and the letters and the phone calls and the pressure, and he's the face of Violin in a lot of times. So I believe his responsibility as well is to consider all of the people that he is serving and all of the people that are watching how he leads and he guides, and that he aligns his belief system. And I believe it has already been aligned because you've hired him and he's been in this role for some time now. But to support his growth, to be honest and upfront with him, and for him to be, him or she, whoever the superintendent is, to be open-minded, receptive, and remember why we gather, why we deliberate, who we represent, and the big picture, which is serving the people of this great community. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it.
Mr. Hoffman? Yeah. I've seen you run across.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I was going to go through, oh, am I on? Good. Okay. What I wanted to do is go through the questions a little asynchronously because I thought that going one, two, three, four, or five would would not really answer the questions easily. I'll answer three first, which is no, I have no, I have no conflicts whatsoever with the board. I'll answer four first because it gives you a little background on me. I went to kindergarten on Panther Road. I went to Winslow, Rossi, Violin High School. I'm a product of the Violin Public Schools. My sisters, who no longer reside in Violin, are proud products as well. I became a lawyer. My sister Tammy is a statistician for Standard &amp; Poor's after going to American and getting her masters. And my sister Pam is a world-renowned child and adolescent psychiatrist who is on is on faculty at Yale. She, as a side effect of some of the things she did, was a, 10 years ago, was working on telemedicine for psychiatry. So if you can believe that the last couple of years have been very busy for her, you can, you'd probably be right. But I'd also like to talk about the next generation, and that is my 11- and 13-year-old kids. They went to kindergarten here through the through the end of the last school year. My 11-year-old son just completed his last day at Winslow, which considering that I went from my first day to last day at Winslow, and he went to his first day and last day at Winslow recently, it was a bittersweet moment that all of our family had gone through that same school. But my 13-year-old daughter went in, went through AMSA. She was accepted into AMSA and for the last two years has been over at Johnstone, and before that she was at Winslow. I say that in the past tense, unfortunately. They'll be attending school in Voorhees in the fall and living with their mother. That decision was in no small part because of an objective comparison between the school systems. In the best interest of my own children, I had to, I couldn't, yes?
I'm sorry, if you could just get a little closer to the microphone?
I'm sorry, I felt like I was booming a little bit. I apologize. But yeah, for the best interests of my own kids, I chose that they should go to Voorhees after looking at the comparative, the comparative school systems. And I said, I couldn't stand to just keep them here where the only difference was that I would be upset if they were somewhere else. So I've had to deal with that situation, and I said, I need to make a change, and the only way to do that is to be the change. And this opportunity came right up after that situation arose. So this was the first opportunity I had to make and be that change. I want people to be able to say they're proud to be a product of Violin Public Schools. So that's going back to question number one, in the simplest of terms, I want to serve because honestly, I believe that my knowledge, experience, and energy can help make our school system a better place. Public service, especially on an unpaid Board of Education like this, is a religious calling. It's, I spend my days as an attorney trying to help people better their lives, and I know most people don't see lawyers that way, but we are out there trying to help people. I spend my nights and weekends trying to help my kids and trying to make their best lives the best possible, happy, healthy, intellectually challenged, and prepared to be safe, prepared and safe for the issues that are out there. And if they're listening to this and watching me on YouTube, I love them very much, and that this is, if I were to get this position, it would be a labor of love to help kids like them to succeed and live their best lives. Now, the, what I would perceive as the, I think that I'd go to question five then, is as a board member, what do I see as, do you see yourself as a representative of the taxpayers, the school district, or both? I think that's asking what my role, what the role of the board would be and what my role would be within the board. And that would be, that proposed rule would be primarily serving as a public expression of the community's desires for the education of our kids. I'd serve as a representative of, representative voice of the residents of Violin without distinguishing them as taxpayers or citizens, parents, or any other label we want to put on them. They collectively are our community, and they have a vested interest as we have a delegated duty to serve them and educate our, their children. But we can't just serve, the Board of Education shouldn't just serve itself. It serves the children. It makes their lives a better place, and it's intended to make their better place. So I do that to go back to question two, which is asking the two biggest issues that that are addressing the Violin Public School System now. I would say first, it's achieving our goals through the positive and negative aspects of technology and modernity. And second, is ensuring a safe, equal, and challenging environment for the children with our available resources. As for the technological concerns, we've seen locally what social media can do. It can politicize education. As a Board of Education, I hope we can rise above the division and find common ground in bedrock truths. We all want what's best for our kids. We all want a safe environment for them to learn. I'm going way over time, all right?
We have seven minutes, and we have one final question.
Okay. But we also want for our diverse kids to be provided for equally, and this requires academic and physical honesty and safety for our kids. Now, what I'm saying about academic honesty is, I ran the previous questions that this board has run through ChatGPT, and frankly, I would have hired ChatGPT to do this job over me because it gave much better answers than I ever could before you guys today in a lot less time. I was impressed by the responses, but we need to focus then on what distinguishes us in our humanity, what distinguishes and makes us human. And also, we need to focus on providing that safe environment for our kids to actually get that education. Those are the most important issues that we have. Yes?
I ask you the final question. Is that okay?
Sure, please.
It's a two-part question. Describe what you believe the responsibility of a board members are. So describe what you believe the responsibility of a board member is, and what you believe the responsibility of the superintendent is.
What I, I believe that if we go, if we go to the global aspects of what I said they are all about, focusing on the best interests of our kids. The board itself is tasked with dealing with the allocation of resources, the setting of policy, and the conceptual guidance for the district. The superintendent is the functionary of that policy. We, as a board, you are elected, you are the elected voice of the community, and therefore you must mirror the community that you're serving. And with regard to the superintendent, he is a hired employee to do the functions as set in policy by the Board of Education.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So at this time, is there a motion? So at this time, is there a motion for executive session? Roll call?
Are you reading the resolution?
Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the City of Vineland School District will convene an executive session for the following reasons as outlined in NJSA 10:4-12. Discussion including board vacancy and any matters falling within the attorney-client privilege to the extent the confidentiality is required in order for the attorney to exercise his ethical duties as a lawyer.
Thank you. At this time, we will go into executive session, and we will be back shortly. Do I have a motion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Fioki?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Potty?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Motion carries.
First, I'd like to thank both of our candidates for coming out this evening, Mr. Hoffman and Mrs. Douglas. You know, it's a huge job. It's a thankless job, and we really appreciate your interest. And, you know, we hope to see you again, and it is election time. So if you do not, if you're not selected this evening, you can always put your name in the hat for the running in the general election. So good luck to both of you, and thank you again for coming. At this time, do I have a motion for the appointment of the individual to fill the board vacancy?
President Spinelli, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ms. Makima Douglas to the Vineland Board of Education pending his successful background check up until the regor... organization meeting in January 2024.
Second. Roll call, please. Ms. Costa? Yes.
Mr. Fioki?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Potty?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Did you want to come up and say a few words?
I can't thank you all enough for your vote of confidence. I want to say thank you to my family, friends, and even viewers that are watching. Tonight is not about becoming a seated or sitting member on the board, but it's about accepting a great responsibility to represent and to serve, to serve the taxpayers and members of this great city of Vineland, New Jersey. I'm ready for the challenge, and I challenge you to help me. Thank you.
I will be reaching out to you, and we will get the ball rolling. Mr. Mustarelles' office will be reaching out to you for some paperwork, and then we'll be in touch. So we'll see you next month. At this time, we are going to close our special meeting and move on to our regular meeting. At this time, the meeting is adjourned. Any motion? Any abstentions? Any opposed?
Aye.
Welcome to the Vineland Board of Education Agenda for the Combined Meeting, 5:00 PM, July 12, 2023. Roll call, please.
Ms. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Fioki?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Mr. Rivera?
Here.
Mr. Sabrana?
Present.
Mr. Silva?
Here.
Mrs. Cottis Potty?
Here.
Ms. Spinelli?
Here.
In compliance with the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law, commonly referred to as the Sunshine Law, the Vineland Board of Education has caused notice and posted to this meeting to be sent to the following: Announcing Time, Place, Agenda, etc. The Daily Journal, S&amp;J Today, The Press of Atlantic City, Vista Bueno, The Clerk for the City of Vineland, and the Administrative Office Public Bulletin Board. At this time, please stand for the flag salute. Scott, is there a resolution for executive session?
There is not.
Moving on to special presentations.
We have two this evening. First, I would like to invite Mr. James Fern, Vineland High School World Language Teacher. He will present the VHS German Exchange Program for 2024. There's a presentation, so it will be lower in our projector screen, so just please slide over.
Our screen. So that's the best that we can do right now. Mr. Fern, I apologize for that. I'll blame our facilities guy. Oh, he's not here. He ran away. I'm kidding. But sorry about that, sir. If you can do your best without that.
It's all right. I'll be sure to make it available to the board members if necessary.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is James Fern. I teach German and English as a second language at the high school. I'd like to propose a further... Or once again, I should say, an exchange program for our German students with our partner city of Borchheit and our partner school of Johannes Lurgazahn Schule in the town of Borchheit. I've been employed here since 2010. This would be my fourth time running this exchange program. We have had some great successes in the past and great experiences. I know many of my former students that I'm still in touch with are... Consider those some of their best memories of time at Vineland High School. As a summary, our partner city of Borchheit will host our Vineland High School students for two weeks in June and July of next summer. And the following October of 2024, the students that hosted ours, our Vineland High School students in Borchheit, will come to Vineland and stay in their partners' homes for two weeks and experience life in Vineland and as a student at Vineland High School. You can sort of see, if you can sort of make out the red dot on the bottom right of the map of Germany. Borchheit is a small town in the western section of Germany, about 45-minute car ride from both the Dutch and Belgian borders.
No, we're now, we'll now resume our meeting.
I hope we're waiting on John.
I think we can go.
I want to breathe through the second part, come on.
Breathe through the second part?
Yeah.
I'd like to go long this time.
I might have to go clear.
Where? Oh, what, down there?
To clean ten lines?
I know.
Or I gotta beat two houses tomorrow.
At this time, we will now resume our meeting. First, I'd like to thank both of our candidates for coming out this evening, Mr. Hoffman and Mrs. Douglas. You know, it's a huge job, it's a thankless job, and we really appreciate your interest. And, you know, we hope to see you again, and it is election time. So if you do not, if you're not selected this evening, you can always put your name in the hat for the running in the general election. So good luck to both of you, and thank you again for coming. At this time, do I have a motion for the appointment of the individual to fill the board vacancy?
President Spinelli, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ms. Makima Douglas to the Violin Board of Education, pending his successful background check up until the regor- organization meeting in January 2024.
Second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta.
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Rivera.
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana.
Yes.
Mr. Silva.
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Potty.
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Did you want to come up and say a few words?
I can't thank you all enough for your vote of confidence. I want to say thank you to my family, friends, and even viewers that are watching. Tonight is not about becoming a seated or sitting member on the board, but it's about accepting a great responsibility to represent and to serve, to serve the taxpayers and members of this great city of Vineland, New Jersey. I'm ready for the challenge, and I challenge you to help me. Thank you.
I will be reaching out to you, and we will get the ball rolling. Mr. Mustarel's office will be reaching out to you for some paperwork, and then we'll be in touch. So we'll see you next month. At this time, we are going to close our special meeting and move on to our regular meeting. At this time, the meeting is adjourned. Any motion?
Yeah.
So moved.
Any abstentions? Any opposed?
Aye.
Welcome to the Violin Board of Education Agenda for the Combined Meeting, 5:00 PM, July 12, 2023. Roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta.
Here.
Mr. Fiocchi.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Mr. Rivera.
Here.
Mr. Sabrana.
Present.
Mr. Silva.
Here.
Mrs. Cottis Potty.
Here.
Ms. Spinelli.
Here. In compliance with the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law, commonly referred to as the Sunshine Law, the Violin Board of Education has caused notice and posting to this meeting to be sent to the following: Announcing Time, Place, Agenda, etc. The Daily Journal, S&amp;J Today, The Press of Atlantic City, Vista Bueno, The Clerk for the City of Vineland, and the Administrative Office Public Bulletin Board. At this time, please stand for the flag salute. Scott, is there a resolution for executive session?
There is none.
Moving on to special presentations.
We have two this evening. First, I would like to invite Mr. James Fern, Violin High School World Language Teacher. He will present the VHS German Exchange Program for 2024. There's a presentation, so it will be lower in our projector screen, so just please slide over.
Our screen. So that's the best that we can do right now, Mr. Fern, I apologize for that. I'll blame our facilities guy. Oh, he's not here, he ran away, I'm kidding. But sorry about that, sir, if you can do your best without that.
It's all right, I'll be sure to make it available to the board members if necessary.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is James Fern, I teach German and English as a second language at the high school. I'd like to propose a further, or once again, I should say, an exchange program for our German students with our partner city of Borchseit and our partner school of Johannes Le Gisamt Schule in the town of Borchseit. I've been employed here since 2010, this would be my fourth time running this exchange program. We have had some great successes in the past and great experiences. I know many of my former students that I'm still in touch with are, you know, consider this some of their best memories of time at Violin High School. As a summary, our partner city of Borchseit will host our Violin High School students for two weeks in June and July of next summer. And the following October of 2024, the students that hosted ours, our Violin High School students in Borchseit, will come to Vineland and stay in their partners' homes for two weeks and experience life in Vineland and as a student at Violin High School. You can sort of see, if you can sort of make out the red dot on the bottom right of the map of Germany. Borchseit is a small town in the western section of Germany, about forty-five minute car ride from both the Dutch and Belgian borders. It is, there's also a picture, sort of, kind of see a picture there of me standing next to Mayor Stefan Kaplan of Borchseit. That was 2012, the first time I went to Borchseit as an exchange. He is currently still the mayor, he was re-elected for another six-year term a few years ago. It is just outside the fourth largest city in Germany, Cologne. Our partner school contains grades five to twelve, it is called the Johannes Le Gisamt Schule. Gisamt Schule meaning sort of all different sorts of schools in one, the German education system's complicated. But there are several different tracks, meaning some students go from grades five to ten, others from grades five to twelve. Students that plan on attending university go for the extra two years. Those that do not are recruited heavily among many different businesses locally and internationally. And they spend what would be their junior and senior years of high school at a corporate-run training program rather than a public school setting. The students that we are going to be receiving in this program would be in grade ten, would be just on the cusp of choosing whether or not they want to pursue a college education or to accept an internship with, with a company. And they will be making that decision in, not long after, in fact, leaving here in, in October of 2024. There are about fifty to seventy-five students per grade level on our partner school, between five and twelve. So you can imagine they, they have quite an eye-opening experience coming to Violin High School that is maybe four or five times the size of their school. Our educational objectives. First and most obvious is learning a language. And there is no substitute, of course, for going to a country where that language is taught and spoken as a native language. That is mainly how I learned German, is by being in Germany, studying in Germany. And it is the best way, some might even say the only way, to become truly fluent in a language. But more than just that, it is a very impressive line item on any job application, resume, or college application. It presents unique challenges to our students that they cannot really get anywhere on this side of the Atlantic. It provides challenges that require analytical and problem-solving skills that will not be tested in, in any other way. But I'd like to refer to what some others have mentioned, as in our problems with conflict here in Vineland. It also provides, really forces students to see things from another person's point of view. I think in such a multicultural environment as Vineland, it's important for our students to be able to see things from a new perspective, to understand that the way I see the world is not the same as the way someone else sees the world. And to learn that there are, yes, there are cultures across the Atlantic that are different from mine, but there are also cultures here at home that are different from mine. And learning to see things from a different person's perspective, that's an important skill to have for our students. So, our proposed schedule, in February, I will begin online contact with our partner school and to allow the students about six months to communicate with potential partners. June 2024, immediately after our school year is over, we will be traveling to Borchseit for two weeks. October 2024, they will be here for two weeks and attending Violin High School. Our organization, or our program is sponsored by the German-American Partnership Program, which is a subset, or is run by the Goethe Institute in New York, which is sponsored by the German federal government. They offer, they offer financial aid to students and to teachers. They would be potentially giving a significant amount of money to, to offset the cost of my ticket, or the chaperone's tickets, I should say, as well as some other program benefits like discounts on travel insurance, which is a necessity. Planning schedule will begin in September as soon as the school year begins. First family meeting will be planned in November, I have several family meetings scheduled, as well as likely I will be in contact with parents fairly regularly over the course of, course of the entire school year. As you can certainly understand, parents get nervous sending their children across the ocean. So there's a great deal, there are always a huge number of questions to answer, and I will be answering them all year, I'm sure. Final payments, or, I'm sorry, down payments will be due in February. I also hope to have a number, a number of different fundraising events to do, starting hopefully in a few weeks, if possible. The idea we had also had was to do a carnival celebration for, most people know it as Mardi Gras, but it's also celebrated as carnival in Germany. So we can do a big event for a fundraiser there, that's one suggestion. Our second family meeting in March, and final meeting just before we travel in June to make sure passports are in order, make sure host pairings are finalized. It's important to be clear what responsibilities host parents will have and what responsibilities they will not have. So, parents of Violin High School students that hosted German will not be responsible for, sort of, it's not like you're running a bed and breakfast, you're not catering to every whim of a student. They will be experiencing the life of a Violin High School students. So, and communication, as, as I mentioned earlier, is always important, especially among the families of the potential traveling students. I give six months to communicate in advance, not just for the students, but in fact, more so for the parents. For the parents, I encourage the parents to talk about things like religious obligations, dietary restrictions, behavior expectations, anything that they would like their child's caretakers in Germany to know of, and vice versa. Let's see, so I have yet to finalize an expense, that's not going to happen until several months from now because airfare is notoriously fickle in prices. But the price that I quote for each student will include airfare, transit to and from US airports, mandatory travel insurance, equal share of chaperones' travel costs, potentially a rental car for the chaperones in Germany, and any additional excursions to be determined by the group. Additionally, unincluded expenses would be food and housing costs, like water and electricity for hosting a student. It's traditional to bring a gift when someone hosts you for two weeks, so that's not included as well, as spending money and communication costs when traveling abroad. Technology changes very rapidly, and communication costs, including international cellphone plans, can be very fickle as far as their, how much they, or how quickly they change. So arrangements are, pre-arranging, I should say, communication plans is important. Travel insurance normally costs between twenty and forty dollars per person, reimburses us for cancellation of the trip, emergency medical situations, baggage loss, legal and consular services. All of those things are generally included in travel insurance and is required for any student traveling. I have some pictures on there of previous exchanges that we can't really see too well, but I would love to share them with you if you'd like to look. I see some students on here that I'm still friends with and still familiar with. See, so I have sample itineraries for us traveling to Germany, as well as for Germans traveling to here, and a number of, that's the local newspaper in Borchseit with myself and five other students, that wears an article that says, "Fünf US Boys Aus New Jerseys To Gast in Borchseit." Five boys from the US guests in Borchseit. The two weeks are generally pretty well-filled with a lot of activities. In fact, the largest, the largest problem in scheduling generally is to allow enough time for them to experience an average everyday school day, because there are so many things that we want to cram into our two weeks that it's, it's important to remember to include the everyday, regular student experience in, in our time there. So. Yes, all right. So thank you very much for your time, I hope that you will be able to support our endeavor.
Sorry for those technical difficulties, but Mr. Fern will share the presentation with the boards so they can see everything.
And I believe Dr. Sneeden mentioned that the presentation is linked, our board members had an opportunity to look at the presentation, it's an exciting opportunity to take our students to Germany. And I believe it was the last time, 2012, that was the last trip? That was the first time, 2015, excellent, looking forward to having our kids go and to hosting students at Vineland High School from Germany as well, it's a great opportunity for everyone. Thank you so much. Our second presentation is Dr. Sneeden, she's going to walk us through the school year HIB report, but since our projector's not working, Dr. Sneeden, just go, do your best.
I'll try and say more.
No, the projector's working, but the screen's not.
Yeah. So good evening, and thank you for having me. This is our biannual required report of harassment, intimidation, and bullying for Violin Public Schools. This report covers September 2022 through June of 2023. Let me get rid of that. Just a quick definition for a HIB is any gesture, written, verbal, or physical act or electronic communication, whether a single incident or a series of incidents that's reasonably, and it has to be reasonably perceived as being motivated by an actual or perceived characteristic, such as race, color, religion, ancestry, national origin, gender, sexual orientation, gender identity, expression, a mental, physical, or sensory disability, or any other distinguishing characteristics, and it has to take place on school property, at a school-sponsored function, on a school bus, or off school grounds, and it has to substantially disrupt or interfere with the orderly operation of the school. It is a pretty intense definition, and all of those characteristics have to be met for something to be deemed a founded HIB. We know that, I'll advance the slide, it's pretty hard to read. It can be, it has effects of disruption, interference, reasonable fear, physical or emotional harm, and it can create a poor environment for the student by interfering with his or her education. So we do give some samples of things that might be a distinguishing characteristic, just to name a few. Poor athletic ability, academic stereotypes, children with special needs, people with glasses, children living in non-traditional families, overweight children, smaller, physically weak children. So any of those things, if they are, if a student is teased or bullied about, those would be considered a founded HIB after the investigation. This year, this is our data, it does show all the way back from 2017 to 2018. This year, in 2022, 2023, we had a marked increase in HIB reports. I think it's a direct correlation with change in the law that allow, does not allow for principals to make a discern, to say that something is normal student conflict. So if something is reported as a HIB now, it has to be fully investigated within ten days. So from last year to this year, we had a hundred and nine last year, this school year, we had a hundred and ninety-seven. So that's quite an increase. Of those, eighty-six were substantiated, one hundred and eleven were unsubstantiated. I also think that we've done a pretty good job at just training parents and students where to go and how to report a HIB. It's, it's very simple, especially now with our new website, it's right on every page, and parents can do it, or the student can do it from the comfort of their own home and, and when they're feeling safe and supported at home. Or they can report it to the school, so we've, we've seen an increase. I would say that that is making our schools safer, and students feel safe to report it. I would have liked to have seen a decrease, but I can understand where the increase is coming from. I didn't know if any members of the board had any questions about the report. Okay, well, it is submitted for your review, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments regarding B, the HIB? Seeing none, there is no vote necessary. Approval of minutes, June 7, 2023, special meeting. June 7, 2023, executive session. June 22, 2023, special meeting. June 22, 2023, executive session. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta.
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Rivera.
Yes.
Mrs. Sabrana.
Yes.
Mr. Silva.
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Potty.
Yes to June 7, special meeting, executive session, and June 22, special meeting. I abstained from June 22, first part of the executive session, and I said yes to the second part, the superintendent evaluation.
Thank you. Ms. Spinelli.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Any committee reports this evening, starting with Mr. Fiocchi.
Good evening, Finance Committee met Monday, July 10, at 8:00 AM via Google Meet. In attendance was Mr. Mustarel, Ms. Acosta, Mr. Sabrana, Ms. Spinelli, and myself. Following topics were discussed, Johnson's Security Door RFP, mental health bid was rejected. We are now enrolled in positive pay for our checks, UAW negotiations, and we are currently reviewing the substitute costs from fiscal year '22, '23 to try to save some money for next year. Thank you.
Mr. Holmes.
Transportation Committee met on Tuesday, July 11. Present were Mr. Mustarel, Mr. Yano, myself, Mr. Rivera, Ms. Spinelli, and Ms. Blakely. We did a driver recap, fiscal year '22, '23, 140 drivers budgeted, 136 route packages, 135 filled positions, 15 subs, eight drivers in training, two on agenda to be hired as subs, two on the agenda for retirement and resignation. For 2023 and '24, these numbers will be tabulated over the next two months. Driver attendance, average absences in the morning for May were nineteen. Average absences in the morning for June were seventeen. Average absences in the afternoon for May were twenty-two. Average absences in the afternoon for June were twenty. Calendar is done for fiscal year '22, '23, '24. Calendar was completed in conjunction with transportation payroll and SBA office. Union and drivers were sent the calendar. Student Finder cards have been given to the students in June. In-house trainers have been trained. Tablet issues have been addressed. Drivers are currently using the pre-trip inspection side of the tablets. Student Finder will be used for the summer ESY program. Tier Times, we are still waiting on final amended transportation study. The department is currently reviewing the student data in preparation for the '23, '24 routing process. Request for transportation by outside entity, administration will make the decision whether to accommodate or not. These types of contracts open the board to liability. We have had solicitor create a contract to protect the district in cases where transportation is provided. When these types of contracts are implemented, they will appear on the Transportation Committee agendas. Thank you.
Any other committee reports this evening? Seeing, Ms. Acosta.
Thank you. I just want to go back to my vote on the resolution for executive session to abstain to the, the executive meeting portion of June 22, the first half, that I abstained from that part, but I was present for the second part.
Noted, thank you.
Ms. Acosta, do you have the committee report?
Yes. Curriculum instruction met on July 10, 2023. In attendance was Suzette de In attendance was Suzette Di Marchi, Nathan Frye, Dr. Danielle Sneeden, myself, Mr. Sabrana, Mr. Silva, and Ms. Spinelli. Discussed were the 2023 and 2024 supervisor assignments. We also discussed the Administrative Academy that took place in June of 2023. It seems like the Administrative Academy was a very huge success and very well-accepted. They discussed Portrait of a Graduate. It was launched to all district administration. There was discussion of our new website. I have to let Gia know she's done an outstanding job on our new website. Also discussed was Literacy, the engine of equity. And Dr. Sneeden provided further information on Alice, which is, it's a training, and basically, it's a, I can't even exactly explain it well, but it's basically training in terms of what to do in potential situations, emergency situations. It's training that's going to be ongoing, not just with administration, but then, you know, basically district-wide, as well as Navigate 360, which is a software that helps to communicate better within the school district. So, also discussed was the upcoming professional development. In fact, July 11 and today, there were, there was professional development on restorative practices. The Administrative Academy will meet again in August of 2023. Then we have the Non-Tenure Teacher Academy that will meet August 30. We discussed the September professional development days. Those days are September 1, September 5, and September 6. We discussed a CTE update on our health science pathways at Violin High School. I was really happy to hear that we have hired a teacher that will be teaching in health sciences. The curriculum writing is in process. And in terms of the numbers of students that have shown an interest, actually, there are, I believe, over 140 students that have, that will be beginning the health pathway this September. So, that's really wonderful news. The program for health sciences will be located in the Tanner Building. We also discussed middle school career exploration course, which is basically our efforts in the middle schools to introduce our students to the various careers that are available to them, and hopefully to get them thinking about what potential pathway they might like to pursue as they get older and start high school. So, the curriculum is, curriculum writing is in progress, and the curriculum, again, will focus on high school CTE programs. We discussed intro reading update and professional development. Professional development for the intro reading is planned during the '23, '24 school year. We also discussed summer learning resources, and this is, I think, you know, it's really outstanding, and I know that parents will receive further information via text and email. But within our violan.org website, students and parents, they can hit a student tab and, and the news tab. There are activities for students from pre-K through 5th, as well as from 6th through 12th, and tons of resources, fun games, practices. It's a really great way to keep your child engaged throughout the summer months. Like to remind, also on the resources, I'm sorry, on the news tab, there's, there are the assignments for grades 6 through 12, which is mandatory for all 6 through 12 students in language arts. And it has a discussion of what is required of each student to be turned in by September. We discussed the Go Math update for K to 5. The pacing guides assessment, curriculum, curriculum writing during the '23, '24 school year. We discuss middle school and high school math. We discuss the planning stages for the district's initiative to have a kindergarten entry assessment for all students. So, that probably will commence maybe in the following school year, but it's something that will give us a better indication of where each student is as they begin kindergarten. And that is basically it.
That's a lot of stuff.
Thank you. Public meeting report by board solicitor.
None.
We have no student representation tonight. Public comment on agenda items or any other matter? Please limit yourself to three minutes. Seeing none. Motions and resolutions. Superintendent recommendations for discussion and approval by the board. Consent agenda.
Thank you. Requesting discussion and approval regarding personal item 1.1 as noted on our agenda.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none. Seeing none? Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi? Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes, and congratulations to our retirees.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Requesting discussion and approval of procedures and operations items 2.1 through 2.4. 2.1 through 2.4 are noted on our agenda. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Requesting discussion regarding finance items 4.1 through 4.9. And 4.1 is approval of our budgetary transfers. 4.2 is approval of the board secretary's report as noted on our agenda. 4.3, we're submitting two applications as noted for a K through 8 cap bullying prevention program and a waiver. 4.4, approval of the annual report of district contracts. 4.5, approval of the Newfield Bank National Bank depositories for student activity accounts. 4.6, approval of established petty cash and change funds for the school year. 4.7, approval of the renewal of commercial inland marine equipment policy. 4.8, approval of professional developments on restorative practices. 4.9, approval of the agreement between the City of Violin Board Ed and Catapult.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes to all, abstain on 4.7.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Ms. Cottisbody? Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Requesting discussion and approval of items 4.10 to 4.19. 4.10, approval of the agreement between Violin Board of Education and Catapult for evaluation determination of eligibility services. 4.11, approval of a professional services contract agreement with Brett De Novi Associates. 4.12, approval of the consultant agreement between Violin Board of Ed and E-Rate Consultant. 4.13, approval of an in-house equipment rental agreement for 44 water coolers. 4.14, approval of year-two renewal for home band instruction to the contractor advanced ed centers. 4.15, approval of the Violin Board of Education rejecting all proposals received for RFP 082324. 4.16, approval for the Violin Board of Ed to reject proposals received for PW number 112324. 4.17, approval of the shared services agreement with Cumberland County Improvement Authority for solid waste collection. 4.14, approval of the noted tuition contracts. 4.19, approval of the sale of the vehicle list on file with the board secretary.
Any questions or comments? Yes.
Please note that 4.10, 4, I'm sorry, 4.9, 4.10, and 4.17, I believe the superintendent's recommendation is subject to a form of agreement acceptable to the board solicitor and the superintendent. Those contracts have not yet been reviewed and negotiated. So, with that stipulation, you can take the motion.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes to all, abstain on 4.17.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Regular agenda, none. Number 11, proposed items for review or discussion or adoption by board members. Approval of a motion confirming the completion of the superintendent evaluation process on June 22, 2023. Discussion and approval of a resolution settlement of legislation, sorry, lit- litigation in accordance to the terms set forth in the release of the settlement agreement on file with the board secretary. Any questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Roll call, please.
Who, who is the motion from?
Yeah, you can't, yeah, that's the CC.
Wait, for the, Ms. Acosta and Ms. Cottisbody are conflicted on the second part.
Second one.
So, can I get?
You should withdraw your second.
I'm gonna with, I'm gonna withdraw my second.
Second.
So moved. Second.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Thank you. Ms. Acosta?
Abstain.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Quick question. Is the evaluation always made public to the board?
Yes.
Or to the pub, sorry?
I believe it's-
To the public. Is it always made accessible to the public?
Yeah, I believe so, yes.
By Oprah, right?
It's linked on our agenda, so that means if-
The evaluation, Joe?
Alright, just us.
It's, it's a, any evaluation is a personnel matter. Dr. Rossi, there's no public disclosure of the, of the evaluation?
Just checking.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
No, abstain.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Yes to the first part of the approval of the superintendency vow, and I have to abstain from the second part.
Mr. Mustarel, if you could just note that I am saying yes to the first part as well. Just to the second part, I need to abstain.
Mr. Mustarel, I have to abstain from the first part, the evaluation, but I say yes to the second part.
Is there a math supervisor in the house that can help me out here? Mrs. Cottisbody? Okay. Ms. Spinelli?
Yes, and for clarification, the superintendent evaluation is not viewed by the public. It is a hyperlink here for the board.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Approval of bills for May 2023. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody? Ms. Spinelli? Motion carries.
Emergent items with prior approval, none. Any old business this evening, none. Any new business this evening? None. Board member remarks. Please limit yourself to five minutes. Mr. Rivera?
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Hoffman and Mrs. Douglas for putting their names into consideration for the vacant position on the board. It's always good to have individuals from the public wanting to serve and wanting to give back to the community. I thank you both. Mrs. Douglas, welcome. I'd like to be the first one to welcome you. Not officially, you haven't been sworn in yet. But welcome to the board. I look forward to working with you. I look forward to your ideas and your, your thoughts on all of the issues that we cover. And get ready to work, because it's time to work. Mr. Hoffman, there's always, there's always November. There's always other opportunities to come and serve on this board, and I welcome you, and I, and I ask you to do so. And lastly, I just wanted to say, parents, get involved in your children's education. Get informed and ask questions. Good night.
Mr. Sabrana?
Thank you. I'd like to echo Mr. Rivera's comments to both of the candidates for the open seat. Congratulations, Ms. Douglas. I look forward to working with you. I'm here to serve you in any way I can, take advantage of my longevity, if you will, here. Eight years on the board and 20 years hanging around the place. Public service is an interesting thing. Everyone always tells me it's thankless. Well, I don't, I've never felt it was thankless. There are times when it's a big challenge, and there's times when it's frustrating and aggravating. Times you say, why did I do this? But when you do something that you think is right, defend the position, or a person, or a program, or help improve the quality of the education for every kid in the district, you think, well, now that's worth it. I like your passion, and I like your presentation, and I think you're going to find it well worth it. As for all of our other, our employees and those people working so hard, it's a very, very short summer. I always wondered what people do in the summer. Well, you can talk to that gentleman, well, he was sitting over there, Mr. Farinaccio. All the projects that have to- All the projects that have to be done in the short period of time that we have to get them done, and there's an awful lot that has to be done. So I, I wish all of them, um, a chance for a little bit of rest anyway, and we look forward to another great school year. Thank you.
Mr. Silva.
Yes, I'd like to also echo my fellow board members. Um, I'd like to welcome Ms. Douglas to the board. I am looking forward to working with you. Mr. Hoffman, um, thank you for putting in your name and, like Dennis said, there's also November. So we're looking forward to any new candidates that want to put their name in it, but that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Fiocchi.
Mrs. Douglas and Mr. Hoffman, I want to thank you both for taking time out of your schedules. I know this is, uh, it's not the easiest to come out here and answer these questions in front of everybody. Mrs. Douglas, I look forward to working with you in the future. Congratulations.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes, congratulations to Mrs. Douglas. Looking forward to welcoming your perspective onto this board. Thank you, Mr. Hoffman, for your interest in this position. I also want to thank, uh, our vacating member, Ms. Renee Fabry, for her time that she spent here on the board. Hope you're all enjoying your summer and enjoy the last, uh, bit of it that we have left. Thank you.
Ms. Acosta.
I will echo my board members' sentiments. Um, first of all, Ms. Douglas, I am looking forward to having you as our next board member. It's gonna be, I think, very interesting and challenging work. And I look forward to what you, your prospectus and what you have to offer. And thank you so much for, uh, showing your commitment to the Violin Public Schools. Mr. Hoffman, you as well, thank you so much for showing interest in participating with the Violin Board of Education, but particularly your interest, um, in the youth of our community. I would just remind not only Mr. Hoffman, I'm sure he may know, but just, just the public in general, that, um, if you are interested in running for the November election, petitions are due, um, on July thirtieth. Oh, thirty-first, okay? So if you are interested, um, you can pick up a petition here at the Violin Administration Building, um, and basically collect your signatures and then return it. Again, you know, I, I also believe that it's, um, it's challenging work, but it is, to me, very gratifying work. Knowing that you're playing a small part in, uh, making your community better, but more importantly, um, doing our part with respect to our, the future generations to come. So thank you very much. Enjoy your summer and don't forget your summer reading. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Ms. Cottis Patti.
I'd like to echo my fellow board members. Um, I'd like to thank both of you for putting yourselves out. I know how difficult it can be. Um, Mr. Hoffman, as everybody said, there is November. Ms. Douglas, congratulations. I'm looking forward to working with you. I listen to a lot of your ideas and I'm excited. I know that you've been out here, you've been watching the past couple of years, so I think you kind of get a hint as to what goes on, but until you sit in that chair, you're gonna find out, but I'm excited to have you. To echo what Ms. Acosta said, we have three three-year seats running and one one-year term. So there will be four seats up this year. But again, um, everybody have a great summer, and I have to echo what Mr. Rivera said. Parents, please get involved. There are way too many things going on out there and, um, we just need our, our parents out there to help. So everybody have a good rest of your summer and God bless you.
Mr. Yanov.
Yes, um, just want to say, uh, thank you to our candidates who came out this evening. Congratulations to Ms. Douglas for the work, uh, that you're gonna help us accomplish this year. We have quite a challenge ahead of us as we continue and move into, uh, the new school year. We're busy planning. A big thank you to our administrative team. We've had an excellent professional development, uh, to close the school year. Uh, even today with our restorative practices training, all the work that's going into getting ready for our new, uh, for our kids, right? That's why we're doing the work. When they come in, in September, we have an awesome, uh, plan to launch our Portrait of a Graduate project with the whole district. These are exciting times in our district. Uh, we also are really excited about our website and, uh, really excited about our new app. It's Everything Violin Public Schools in Your Pocket. That's our tagline. Uh, it's kinda cute. I know Gia's giving me a thumbs up, I think, over there for using it. Uh, you'll be able to download an app and get all the notifications, you know, just like as if you were on Facebook, but it'll actually be nice comments about the, about the district. Not so much gossip and other fun stuff, but really cool, positive things are happening. Want to say thank you to our students who are just doing amazing work. And also, just a moment to acknowledge what was mentioned earlier about the student in eighth grader who recently, uh, whose life was taken in Millville. It's tragedy that's way too close to our school district. We experienced our own tragedies in the last year or two and, and in recent times. This is something that we need to take very seriously and work collaboratively between all of the Cumberland County districts, between Bridgeton, Millville, all of our districts, to talk about how we can do better for our students. We will be launching a series of community conversations next year aimed at reducing school violence and working with the Cumberland County Prosecutor and anyone else who's willing to work with us. So, uh, we look forward to launching that. Thank you.
Thank you again to our candidates, um, this evening who came out.
There was a clerical error. I have to abstain from a meeting that I was supposed to abstain from. So the superintendent's evaluation, special meeting, I have to abstain from that.
Note it. Okay. Thank you again to our candidates, um, for putting your name into the ring. And to Mrs. Douglas, you will be assigned a committee. And I do encourage you to, when we have an opening on a committee where a board member, um, cannot attend, that it is the best way to find out what is happening quickly. So we have multiple different types of committees here governed by the board. And recently, there's kind of been a lot, you know, summer, people are a little busier, work schedules. Um, so we always put an email out if somebody can't make it, that you can join in on a committee, um, instead of another board member. So that is the quickest way to learn. I feel like a lot of good things happen through committees, things are discussed through committees, and things don't come in front of the, um, board meetings until they are approved through the committee. So if it doesn't get approved through the committee, you're not gonna see it come up front. So, you know, we'll bring it back and have more discussions about that. I want to thank Ms. Fabry for her time that she spent here on the board. I know it wasn't an easy decision for her. I do understand, if you know, family first, and, and she got a promotion at her job, and that is important for her family. So I do want to thank her for her time here. It was a pleasure working with her and I wish her nothing but the best. So at this time, I would like to adjourn this meeting. All in favor?
So moved.
Aye.